We have a, we have, thank you very much. We have a short agenda tonight, thankfully. But the first order of business is this agenda, does anybody else have anything else for the agenda they'd like to get on the working session? Let's start with the bylaws. We've, we've gone through this quite a bit at our last meeting, hey Mike, at our last meeting, I believe we had discussed what was a near final version and we had some additional changes at that meeting, Ron, that you made after the meeting and redistributed it. And I think they're all in here. I went back through my notes and they looked to me like they're all in here. So I guess the two questions, you had a margin note here in here, Ron, about, on page one, about whether should we, where it says zoning ordinances in the section one of Article Two, the very, in the kind of the last sentence of that section one, it says zoning ordinances, and you said, should that be UDC? I think it's, I think that's right. You see where we are?
I do.
Yeah. Mike, you have Lori's phone number. Should have suggested this at the top of the phone. Is Lori connected yet?
463 now.
Hey Lori? Lori? There we go. Okay, what's her phone number?
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, yay. Sorry.
463. One second. Hey Lori, if we lose you again, I'm gonna call you on the phone and we'll put you on speakerphone here, okay?
Okay, that sounds good. Okay.
All right. Well, we just talked about it and we're all, we're all in agreement that we only made one change that, that Ron and Mike suggested, and it's, it's simply simplifying where it says in section, we're talking about the bylaws.
Yep, right.
In section one, it's Article Two, Section One, at the very end it says, "Commission may, from time to time, recommend to the city council the consideration of changes to subdivision regulations, subdivision regulations, zoning ordinances, and then official zoning maps and litany of some other things." And for, to streamline that, Mike and Ron have suggested that we replace the terms subdivision regulations and zoning ordinances with the defined term UDC, which makes sense. It's just, you okay with that?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Other than that, I think, we've talked about it here. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have one question, Doug. We had talked about it before, but I don't remember what we had decided on. And that was in section seven when we were talking about the votes and if it's a tie. Remember, I had suggested some language, but I don't remember if we decided that would be better in a user guide rather than our bylaws.
I think we decided in the user guide.
Okay. And then the only other thing I wanted to suggest, and this is just minor, 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 so I don't have a preference, instead of using the word chairman, it should probably be careperson.
That's really, that's really correct. Or can it be just, it can't just be chair. Let's just say chair, okay? Is that okay with everybody?
I think it is here in some other documents, but since if you use the word chair, it's gotta be capitalized, right?
Well, that was kind of my, I thought, oh, it switched to chairman, but then I noticed, well, no, it's not capitalized, so it's just presiding officer, right? I mean, it's just, because it could be the vice chair, it could be anybody, right?
Yeah, I think, I think that when.
So lowercase chair, just kind of means whoever's chair in the meeting.
Okay. Is that okay with, is that okay with everybody? So we're gonna change it.
Yeah, I think.
Go ahead, Lori.
I'm sorry, I was, I think I was actually looking at the zoning hearing procedures is where I saw that. And then that is actually the chairperson that is directing it. But however you guys decide is fine. It was just a small comment.
We can't really change the zoning procedures, that's by resolution, but in our bylaws we can, I think the intent is clear.
Amazing.
Okay.
I think the intent is clear.
Public caring ones?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Those are, those were adopted in 2024 by the city council.
Oh, I see.
Those two attachments, and we can't really alter those. So we can, we can make sensible changes during a meeting up to a point, up to a point.
Okay.
But not really the substance of that. You have to follow those. Lori, I don't think anybody else here had any other comments on it. Do you have anything else?
No, that was my only comment. Looks good.
Well, I think what we're gonna do then is we're gonna, call it provisional, we're gonna bring it to a vote right now, but then we're gonna reaffirm it at a business meeting, at our next business meeting. Is that all right with you?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
Although I can't vote, I guess, because I'm online, but that's okay.
No, I'm, I think, I think we're gonna allow that, Lori.
Okay.
And then once we pass them, we've got to clear it up that by teleconference is okay. So, all right, so look. All those in favor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and make the, I move that we adopt the bylaws as the last version of the bylaws that you have distributed with the one change we talked about, about changing the phrase subdivision regulations, comma, zoning ordinance in section, in Article Two, Section One, to UDC. And with that change, I make a motion that we adopt the bylaws, the amended, first amended and restated bylaws. Now, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I'm aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay? Nobody says nay? So it's passed unanimously by the quorum that's present? Now, we have the really tough decision about choosing a date for training. I'm gonna actually start out with a question for everybody that, I just want to make sure we aren't leaping past the obvious. Does, does everybody want to do this, this training session? Need it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think so. I just want to make sure. Will, are you?
Yeah, training's great.
Okay, okay. Just, and Lori, you're doing a lot of training, but do you mind doing another one?
So it depends on the date. I think I sent you a separate email that I'm having some surgeries and I'll be out of commission a little bit in October, I think is when you guys were thinking about it, September, October?
Well, I think the dates.
But yeah, I wanna go to that training either way, yes.
Absolutely. I think, I think based on some of the comments I've received so far, the September dates aren't gonna work. And so we're in October. And what are the dates you have there, if you won't mind repeating them, Ron?
Yes. So I have October 16th, 17th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 28th, and 29th.
Lori, of those dates, we'll start with you. What works for you? Do any of them work for you?
I'm gonna say no. And, and just to let you know, I've already registered for that particular class. I was gonna cancel it if one of these dates worked for our group class, but I think I'll just go ahead and, and take that class next week. Since my surgery, my second surgery date has not been set yet, and it'll likely be in October.
Well, I would say that that's, that's a pretty good solution to it, and I think we should go ahead. I, I don't think we can expect that we're gonna get 100% attendance here. We should try for majority, what works for majority. I'm gonna start next with Mike and Ron. Which of those dates work or don't work for you?
It's, it's so far out for me that it should be fine, any of those dates that we pick.
Uh, Mike?
The 16th and 17th are part of the week of Atlanta Public Schools Fall Break, so there's a chance I'll wanna be out of town.
All right. Who's next? One of the remaining dates?
Sure, yes. It's the 16th, the 17th, the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 28th, and 29th.
21st is what? Why do I have?
We're doing, we're proposing one day of training or two back to training?
It was one day.
One day.
And I assume we're talking about doing it here? Are we, I guess we can decide where?
Yeah, it could be anywhere, but we did talk about, with Chrissy, that we would do it probably here. We did reach out to other communities surrounding us, South Fulton, Palmetto, but we didn't hear anything back from them.
On the remaining dates in October, the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 28th, and 29th, I can do any of them.
I can take that.
Not the 23rd? Yeah. And this is, oh, this is during the day, right?
It's an all-day event.
Yeah. It'll be what, eight to five or eight to four?
Yeah, we didn't work out the exact hours, but it usually is an all-day thing, usually runs until.
And I said eight, I don't know, maybe it starts at nine, who knows?
Yeah.
Hey Lori, what time are your meetings starting, your training sessions?
Oh, you mean tomorrow, or?
Yeah, no, no, the ones you've been going to. What time do they normally start?
They normally start at nine o'clock and they go to four.
Okay, nine to four. That's about what I'd expect.
Okay. My personal preference will be, if we're not looking at the 16th or 17th, the 21st through the 23rd.
Well, 23rd is out.
It's out.
23rd's out, so the 21st?
21st or 22nd then.
21st or 22nd. Will? Yeah, those work for me, you guys?
Yeah, all four of those remaining date.
Yeah, yeah, me too. Which days of the week are we talking about?
We should probably have a backup date.
The Tuesday, Tuesdays and the Wednesday.
How about the Wednesday, Tuesday? What's the, what's the, well, that is a... Okay. Yeah. How about the 21st with a backup is 22nd?
Yep.
Perfect.
That works.
Thank you.
Lori, you might want to write that down just in case.
Okay.
I really appreciate your flex.
Okay, and then the second is the backup.
21st with the backup is 22nd. And I suspect if John Crespo or Christine have a preference, we can swap those around or come back on the 28th, 29th. But right now, that looks good. Ron, do you mind communicating that to everybody and particularly John?
Absolutely.
Christine, that we're proposing the 21st with a backup 22nd and see if they have any objections to that?
Kind of do a ranked choice, 21, 22, 28, 29.
28, 29, yeah.
That way, if it somehow, with those two inputs, it opens it up.
Yeah, I can make them. It'll be tough, but I'm, so those will be my third and fourth choice.
Okay. You know, we want to try to do it as long as we can, but if you, we all have lives too.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Can we allow that?
No, you, well, you are. I don't know what this business is about, the spring break was all about. Does anybody have anything else for the good of the order?
I wanted you all to know about a couple of applications we have in hand, just so you're, it's not a surprise. I guess you all got the email earlier today. There were some people in the building, a little charrette on a residential hamlet. So we've actually had two residential hamlets come in just under the wire. They were obviously both aware that it was likely to go away. One of them is the one, well, you've probably already heard about on Rico Road, Warble and Ring, 100 acres, Grady Cousins property. It's focused on agriculture and arts and maker spaces and then residential uses. And so we have that application in. That's almost exactly 100 acres, 100 point something, I think. And then, so I think that'll be first, I think both of these will be first read this coming at the next city council meeting. And then the other one is Hearn Road. A property owner there was interested in exploring options for his property and ended up recruiting other property owners who have all signed their application forms and everything. They've got 145 acres on Hearn Road. As you know, Hearn Road is kind of a big U, some of it's in the middle, some of it's on each side. But they are proposing again residential hamlet, only residential uses. Many of the property owners don't have particular plans to do any development with their property. So they, I think, come in with some number, you know, residential hamlet can be 0.8 units per acre. So they could do, they could propose 120 units on 100, well, not quite 150 acres, but you get the idea. And they're proposing a number, we don't, their final number's in flux. We have a number, but it's, the meeting today was working with them and their designer on refining the plan. It was actually a little premature to have invited you, so it's, it's fine and maybe good that no one came today. We're gonna try to get them to set up, or they proposed maybe setting up a Zoom where they present to city council members and planning commission members what the actual plan is. But some limited development on some of the parcels, some parcels without anything proposed, at least for now. I'm trying to decide about, you know, if they change their mind later, exactly what level of, they would certainly need a comp plan approval. Does it need to rise to the level of a, a zoning modification, which requires all the advertising and everything? So we'll have some conditions related to that. But you all get a chance to see it, of course, as I say, residential only, about 40 to 50 units on 150 acres, all on Hearn Road. So I just wanted you to know those were in the offing. If you want to learn anything about them, of course, we can, you know, we can, we can talk to you about it. I do expect, so I know the Grady Cousins project, first one I talked about on Rico Road, they've done their public engagement. This Hearn Road hamlet is still doing more. They've done some, but not what complies with the requirements, so they're gonna be doing another event. We have a tentative date for that, right? Do you remember what it is?
It was August 5th.
August 25th, we think, which is a Monday, right, Monday night?
Yeah.
So that will be, because when, in their public engagement that they've done so far, they talk to Hearn Road neighbors, you're right, the immediate neighbors, they were, that was also part of their recruiting, like, who wants to join us? This one now will include everyone within 2,000 feet, invitations to owners within 2,000 feet, as is required in the, in the application form. So there is, is one still coming for them. But the Grady Cousins one on Rico Road, they did some public engagement a while back. I don't know how many of you got to be there, but again, expect to see those probably, probably next month.
Doug, can I ask Mike a question?
Sure.
Um, Mike, I don't know if you can hear me. How does that work when there's multiple property owners that want to join together and do a hamlet? How does that work?
It's fine as long as it's all master planned together. So we've said for a long time, it doesn't have to be one owner, right? It doesn't matter as long as they join into a, a single application and the, the hamlet is master planned. This is a little different than I had always anticipated those might happen, what I always thought. We've talked about owners syndicating together, maybe joining an LLC, they all have their share of the LLC and it would all, in this case, most of the property owners are still interested in their particular property. And so they would each have a certain amount of rights and certain responsibilities on their particular property. And if they're exchanging, now they're not talking about pushing the density limit, so I don't think there's gonna be any need for them to trade development rights internally, but that's why I was talking about.
But they would all need, all need to be contractually obligated if all 145 acres are approved, right? Because if they drop below 100, then it's not a residential hamlet. Okay.
That, that's right. We've talked about the need. So we've only spoken with the main, well, two, two members, two property owners, the main applicant, the driver behind the whole effort. We haven't spoken with most of the property owners. And we've talked about our concern about their full understanding of what their, not only their rights, but their obligations under the hamlet zoning, right? They have to be willing to protect their land as open space through conservation easement. They have to be willing to join an HOA. They have to be willing to have buffers on their property if they are adjacent to the RL district, things like that. There are some design requirements for the buildings that don't apply in RL. And so we will be making sure that they understand that. We are starting that effort now. In other words, we've spoken with the applicant about the need to, to reach everybody. But I've also spoken with the city attorney about, about those concerns, and we'll write it in as a condition. They'll all have to design, sign a development agreement, or the approval be contingent, contingent on that, right? So they won't be able to move forward unless we get a development agreement to participate in all those things that are required by code.
Is each one of the individual property owners, their conservation percentage, is that based on the amount of their property that's contributed to the whole?
So that's right. That's their proposal, that each one would preserve, you know, the minimum percentage that they would be required to, to protect on, on their property. Now, according to our rules, they can trade those. And so we wouldn't necessarily hold them to that if they want to trade them internally by whatever, right, contractually or whatever. So if somebody wants to have a bigger footprint on their property and somebody else is willing to protect more on their property, that should be okay, according to our rules. But all that'll have to be appropriately documented and tracked. So we're, the starting position is that everybody is, is developing only 20% of their property. And in fact, we're expecting them to come in with a lower number. 20% is the maximum. In the discussions today, we were talking about something closer to 10. So we'll see what, see what that, that final version, again, these are the refinements that are being made to the plan. We got the plan with the application under the wire before the residential hamlet went away on Tuesday of last week. But the, the plan needed more refinements and, and that's what today was about. And we thought that by the afternoon, we would have that refined plan document. They had their designer there, but the morning didn't consist of everyone sitting down and drawing things. It was more a matter of discussion. And so we're expecting that, that refined plan in shortly. They don't have much time.
All right. Thank you, yeah.
I would also, if I could just say, I would also keep in mind that, you know, the concept plan that they're gonna be coming forward with is what is actually binding all of these properties together into the future and how they actually develop. So it's not like, like, for example, if we had just one of those, let's say, 10 properties that wants to move forward and develop, the other pieces of that plan would all have to fall into place as well. And there could be a different times, but that they would all come in. But anytime that someone wants to make a change to that concept plan, or say, in 20 years, they say, you know what, I don't really want to build the way that they planned this back in 2025. They can just come right back in and, and request a concept plan change. And then it starts the process back over again.
And we would expect there are aspects of that that could change. And one property owner might say, okay, I want to build, you know, three homes on, on my part of the property. But they also might be required to, say, have part of the trail system on their property, or maybe somebody's access to their property, rather than having another curb cut on Hearn Road, has to use their driveway, right? Those shared elements that they are agreeing to do, they would agree in that development agreement. They can't just decide all of a sudden, oh, I'm not gonna participate in that anymore, unless there's an alternative that gets approved by council. But.
You know, homeowners association and other things.
Right, exactly, exactly. So they'd have to work through that. So there are changes they can make. Other changes might be more difficult to make because it's part of the shared infrastructure for them.
You know, it's, it's a new, it's a kind of a new approach from what we've seen.
It is, it is.
It's not new to have individual owners, fee owners of parcels in a hamlet, but that usually happens after the fact, after the, something's built or the parcels are designated and they're bought. But, but this is, this is different, where they're coming forward and events. And we're, when was, I understand the, the, the Hearn Road application was finished up on Tuesday, literally on the eve of the passage of that code revision that gets rid of residential hamlets. Are, are you all satisfied that it was administratively complete before that meeting?
Yes.
I'm, I'm serious about this. I mean, is it, I think this one deserves some scrutiny. And I want to make sure, I would personally like to make sure and be feel very confident that it was administratively correct. I think that's your decision, but if, if there were anything's missing, we ought to know. I'm not sure about this site plan that you said still needs work, but.
Sewer, the water, how's that all working, yeah?
materially changed that much in a week, right?
So I want to look at that. I think we want to think about that a lot. And, and I'm not, I understand there have been talks before this, but still waiting until the 11th hour. Now, how about the other one, the other, the other?
Warble and Ring.
Warble and Ring. When did that application get submitted?
It's the same.
It was final.
I believe they came in the same day.
Well, look, those are literally under the wire. The attempt was to get it under the wire. And when people do that, sometimes mistakes are made. So anyway, that's, that's a caution that I think we need to be careful about, that, that they were in fact, at minimum, at least administratively complete. So, and, but you guys are satisfied so far? And you, but you guys are satisfied so far, both of them were administratively complete?
Yeah.
All right. I'm sorry to quiz you about that, it's just.
No, it's, have to make sure.
Well.
So, another question, then, Mike, with the warbling, when we had the, they had the open house community meetings, they were far from having a plan in place. They had a sort of idea that it was going to be a sort of arts community kind of thing, but as far as the minimum number of residential units required, I wasn't sure how that was working, and they weren't either at that time, because they were talking about having temporary housing, like the short-term leasing thing, and you weren't quite sure how that worked, so has that been resolved?
Right. So, we, we talked with them about that specifically in their application. So, the residential hamlet does not have a minimum. Mixed-use hamlet has a minimum, but residential hamlet doesn't have a minimum, so they can do a small number of lots if they want. They did talk about artisan residence program, and we talked about the distinction between lodging and residential, and most of those artisan residents will be there for some number of months. So, anything over 30 days is residential. Anything under 30 days is, is lodging. Now, it might be possible for them to use some of those as, just like, as anyone can use in Airbnb, right? But we have then limits on how many of those can be clustered together in what ways. But they said it would be a minority and a small enough number that getting the Airbnb license for the particular units that are doing the, the shorter term ones would, would work for them. So, they understand the distinction between the residential over 30-day stays and the lodging under 30-day stays, and they felt comfortable that what they wanted to do would fit within, within that.
And then, they had also figured out what they were going to do with septic and water, because I think that was still up in the air a month ago.
Right. So, they, yeah, in one of the early meetings, we actually brought the fire chief and/or fire marshal in, I don't remember who, and they talked to them about potential water requirements. They are planning well in septic, making sure that they're talking to the health department about, you know, whether they are going to have, you know, they're potentially going to want to have shared water supply, you know, community water, maybe some community septic, but we'll, we'll need to make sure the health department is on board with what they want to do there. And then, water for fire flow, again, they've, they've talked to the fire department, they know they may need to work some things out with them. They were talking about cisterns and detention ponds and things like that to meet those requirements. But that, you know, I don't have the particulars on, on that yet, but they have heard from the fire department on what some of those requirements might be, and they understand that they're going to have to meet those requirements in order to be able to build, to, to build the way they want to build.
Thank you.
Yeah, I could, I could dwell just a little longer and kind of, I'm taking a step back from these particular applications, just not to dredge over what we just got done with, with these, the changes, but, you know, hamlet residential, at, at one point in time, we thought was a good idea, you know, it was in the code. Right now, it's out of the code. And, you know, when I had a chance to meet with the consultant, I didn't get a thoroughly satisfactory explanation of just what was so awful about hamlet residential, so maybe just for the benefit of the group, and again, trying to make it as broad and as not about these applications as possible, what, what were the main drawbacks of hamlet residential that, that led us to move away from it?
So, my understanding, and I think it was the city council members who decided they wanted to get rid of it. I don't think it was something the consultant was recommending. I'm looking at you.
I'm not sure, I don't think I was at the time.
The, the concern, as actually John has latched on to in some of our discussions about, say, parts of a hamlet that are across the street, right? The concern that you have these residential hamlets, they're just sort of bedroom neighborhoods, they have to drive for everything, for all, everything they, they need to do. The intent originally, before the city was formed, was for villages, and then the hamlets were created. The idea was these things are all mixed-use districts, where you can take care of some of your daily needs, as many as possible, hopefully, on-site, without having, right, right? And so, you're creating these things where people can only drive. And that was my understanding of, of what the, what the concern was. We have had some discussions, we will be bringing up this question, among others, of course, in the comp planning process, the possibility of some other version of a smaller hamlet, agriculturally oriented hamlet. We had a proposer from a, a planning person outside who does agri, agriculturally oriented neighborhoods, or some, this sort of agricultural hamlet. Don't know what the lines around that might be, right? What the minimum sizes might be, I'm sure it'll have minimum size, probably something less dense than we've been looking at as residential hamlet, might be something that falls in line with these two applications. I mean, I don't know what'll, what'll happen in the comp planning process, right? But there might be another version of that to come that we'll discuss, possibly get adopted. I, again, I can't say where that, those discussions will go. There has been some acknowledgement that there are interesting ideas out there that might be creatively and attractively done, that might, might be able to fit in. I don't know that you can get around that, that driving issue if you're not going to have a mix of uses on the site, so. But if you're talking about just a small number of units, I don't know that it's much different than just rural residents anyway. But, I mean, that's all part of the discussion, yeah.
It's all part, but yeah.
I think there was also concern that start stacking them up next to each other, and all you'd have is a resident.
Right, yeah.
Lori, did you?
But I, I do like that idea of having something, since we don't have the special use district anymore.